Order Sweetstown Council meeting for June the twelve twenty twenty five, Tom would you call roll?
That present. Here. Kind here. State of the pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good prayer. Dear Holy Father, thank you for this day, thank you for the beautiful weather outside to be with us today as we work on the town's business, guys with wisdom. And we pray for a wonderful weekend for the circus coming to town, that that'll go well. And be with us as we make decisions tonight, your name will pray, amen. Hopefully we don't end up on the news at the last time.
Tigers from locals with circus.
Better in for circus.
Well, we were on the news last time.
It wasn't Sweetser, it was County when that truck called fire.
Oh, yeah.
Sixty nine.
You remember those? The little animal thing used to come to the Five Points Mall parking lot?
Yeah.
We went through there one time and they had Siberian tigers. And Jess and I, when we first started dating, she started, we were walking through there and that tiger came running over and jumped up on the cape right at Jessica and like rolled it. And she took off running.
That's the worst thing you could do.
I know. I was like that. That was terrible, I was standing right there, it was terrifying. It was like, I'm never going near tiger again.
That minutes before us.
You see, I said.
Yes.
Don't get us the fourteen, but I just got the email yesterday.
Yeah, she have an old email address in.
Ah.
That's why. Make a motion to approve the minutes. Second. Motion for Matt, second Tyler to approve minutes, so we make twenty second meeting, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Done that USI bill for seven twenty, was that outside of?
No, it's within their nine thousand, I think they still got hundred dollars in that.
Okay. Let's see, we got the twenty twenty council say wrong?
Yeah. We should be getting title for that. I didn't get to play. Thank you. I've got it. Get to play.
Do we ever get an answer from Republic of whether they did pick up trash?
Got a waste management contact me. They're preparing to follow F O Y request. Want to see the contract.
Yeah.
Current contract. They want to see the contract?
Who Republic does?
Yeah.
No, waste management. Oh, okay. But you've not heard from Republic as far as why this trash got skipped that day. Did you meet the new rec yet or?
No. I haven't.
Was there, did Sarah talk with them? Did I see an email that came through that they were trying to connect with us?
Yeah.
Okay.
So we're in last year of the, this month was their name was the first month. Last year.
All for for their contract. You would think this would be not the year they want to skip.
Think they're having.
Maybe.
Last one again.
In a second on those. Bills. Sorry, that was a little quick a minute.
Yeah.
Yeah, everything what's given to me also get that. Motion from Matt, a second Tyler to approve the bills as written. All in favor? All right, any opposed? Motion carries. Uh, move on to open public court this time. Members of public may speak on any item of general interest not specific to the meeting agenda, attend the town council jurisdiction, general subject confinement on the speaker. Are there any tablet six or tablet two eighty issues concerning complaints from the public needing the council's attention and needing to address? Folks, did you have anything to?
We're just new to the communities, came to see.
Okay, welcome, where where you at, where do you?
Three hundred Hubert Street.
Okay.
Warren was our realtor.
He went to school with our daughter.
Oh, yeah.
Nina Bailey.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Cool, small world. So three hundred is that on?
It's at the corner of Ravens and.
Craven, okay, got you. So are you Miami County E M A?
Yes.
Same same place, okay.
Yes.
Oh, yeah, cool. Thanks, well, thanks for coming and welcome down.
Hey, hey, Tim, I'm gonna get anything around here, just just let me know.
Okay.
We love it, we love it very much.
Awesome.
It's a great little community, yeah.
I'm sure our neighbors are not too thrilled about our very loud green kids, they they've been raised in the country, so I'm I'm probably saying a thousand times, we're not in the country anymore.
Close enough.
So.
It echoing.
Yeah. Yeah.
But they love it too, so.
Cool, we're glad you're here, thanks for coming tonight. Too bad your realtor didn't show up though.
No.
He's uh, he's coaching low weight, so.
There is what he was doing.
Worthy excuse. Marcus, you got anything towards car show related?
I don't have any updates, but I apologize for missing the last meeting, I got spaced out, I guess, um. I'm just to the collecting money part so we can get these trophies ordered. We're still doing this, right?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, all the trophies sponsored.
Um, there's a couple more that we need to get, but.
How much, how much is it?
Fifty.
Well, we discussed.
Yeah.
We've discussed raising that to a hundred, that way we can cover extra expenses for flyers and virtual media boosts and.
Sure. Good payments.
Remember they have their treasure, I think, isn't it, is that what we discussed, a hundred dollars?
Yeah, I don't, we never came up with a price.
Yeah, we just. I think we had talked at at a meeting.
Last meeting.
Yeah.
By the one I wouldn't hear, yeah.
In order to cover some of those other expenses.
Yeah, it's probably what I'm gonna end up doing is I'll just pay for the, it's gonna take a minute to get the the money collected and and we need to get the flyers. Probably just end up paying for that when I can. And get them made and start passing out.
Yeah.
But really, we need to make sure we get the damn trophies ordered like.
Right.
Then the next, like, I would like to have them ordered by two weeks from now.
What I would recommend is if you are going to do that, just make that your sponsorship fee. Still pay it to the town, that way the expense is paid by the town and it shows that you did your sponsorship, you paid.
I need to pay the artist still. Remember we were gonna do the cash app thing and we never did.
I was out for the.
That was to get it colored.
Yeah.
Well, I haven't even paid him anything yet, that was just kind of like, what he showed us was like his, you know, like, it's just okay. You know.
Yeah, true.
Yeah.
You have, everyone has spoken for the most for trophy, right, I mean, you have most of them.
Yeah, I got all that.
Secure but not paid.
Yeah, and if there isn't any that's that, I know Matt at my, you know, at Elite, he said he would do extra if we need to and link Holden from Webster's performance or two, and I'll I'll do a couple too.
Cause what we could do, if you're to the point you're ready to collect, we could make invoices. That way they have something for her to to show, you know, what what it is.
She be able to.
He's John's employees, I'll let him answer that, but could, uh the why I was gonna say Rachel, Sarah, Sarah, right? Could Sarah create invoices for uh, car show sponsorship? If I got her a generic oh, yeah, sweets or letterhead kind of invoice.
Well, we need that yesterday.
Okay.
Actually two weeks ago.
Okay, I will get.
Well, the people I'm close with, I just collect the money and then we can email to her or screen, I mean, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
Most of the people I asked, I'm actually no, like on a personal level. And I just told him I wasn't taking cash and it would be a check made out to the town.
Yep, I think the next step will start collecting from them, that way we have the money coming in and get the trophies paid for.
Yeah, cause that needs to be done.
And then we can.
We still got plenty of time for that. And honestly, the flyers, like even that being kind of delayed like like we are now. Think I can still swing a good turn out.
Right.
You know?
Yeah.
Just even posting it on like the sweets or page or the Grand County Classifieds, you know, and the hot road, you know, the duck tail shit or whatever. Yeah, so, but yeah, we need, I need to get going on collecting money. So.
Once we collect money, we can get the artist paid for to then drew the flyer and then once he's got that colored and gets that to us, like so sooner we can collect money, even if didn't the Trailside Treats say they were gonna sponsor a trophy?
Mm-hmm.
So we can hit them up, collect money, bring it to the town, get an invoice, get that to them. But then get that artist paid so that we can get that flyer and start pushing it.
Yeah, cause he told me he wasn't gonna do any color until it's paid for.
Yep.
And I haven't actually.
Will you ask him for an invoice?
It, yeah, I can.
Ask him for an invoice and then John, can we budge something to get him paid while we're collecting in parks?
How much, how much this was?
He just wanted a hundred, which is actually pretty cheap.
Yeah, yeah.
But and by fudge, I mean, Rob Peter to pay Paul more or less, uh.
Yeah.
Cause that's probably pot for a second. Anything in it to start with, so there's definitely something, but.
We could use, what we could do is use the Sess.
Okay.
It's still there, I, well, I think, didn't we rename it, I think? Last year? Or look it up, I think that was made a motion, I think we did to rename it for you know, for jet events. I have to research that, that's part of it's not called the Sess. Is that something we can go ahead and cut a check out of to give the?
Yeah, I don't need a check, and we usually do it digital.
Yeah, town doesn't have any, we don't have the means to do cash app or anything like that, do we? We're gradually moving into the mid twentieth century. Marcus, I guess talk with John and but if we, if the town can cut a check to pay them, that way we can get that flyer.
I can.
Cause I didn't, I didn't wanna necessarily pay for it out of my own pocket, uh, just I don't really have the means to do that right now, so.
But, yeah, we, I mean. So. See, I know you guys wanna raise the price, but I told people fifty. I mean, I understand. But I don't want people backing out because it's now doubled.
Yeah. I mean, if you wanna keep it fifty, we just have to figure out another way to.
We don't have to do dash flags.
Yes, we don't have to, we have to find, figure out another way to, you know.
To pay the artist?
To pay the artist, that was the only reason that I was suggesting raising the trophy sponsorship, cause fifty is is very cheap. But if you raise that trophy sponsorship to a hundred, there are fifty dollars of that hundred will go to the trophy. But then that extra money will uh, sit in that account and it can pay for social media boosts, it can pay for the artist, it can pay for anything else that may arise, insurance. Yeah, we're gonna have, we're gonna have to add a rider uh, on our policy. Cover.
On wrap.
It's a type of insurance.
Just a little bit.
Yeah, it's a little insurance in case something crazy happen, tree falls and lands on someone's, you know, cars and trips and.
Um.
No, that was the only reason I was saying to add that is because then we would have, you know, we have the money to pay for the trophies and stuff, but then we have you know, potentially an additional fifteen hundred bucks or whatever it may be to cover like.
Thousand.
Yeah, yeah, to cover.
We're not, no, it'd be an extra. I want to eat like extra thousand.
I'd say if someone's gonna not sponsor because it increased, then keep it a fifty for them, but most people probably won't be too upset.
See, Dugan was like, let me know so I can make sure I put this money back.
Yeah.
So he may not.
Man, I don't wanna lose the sponsor over it, so I mean, they're only like, no. Keep it a fifty for for them or whatever, but. You could tell them if they they stay at fifty, they just sponsor the trophy, if they do a hundred, we'll mention them on social media stuff, that way they're getting something else for their money.
It's good.
Yep.
See, that's why you make the big bucks.
Yeah, that's kind of problem solved.
I'll send you a bill later.
Yeah.
But that, that's the one reason I suggested that was because we have to have an extra money in a pot or unforeseen expenses like the.
No, I get it.
That type of stuff, so even like next year, if we, you know, when we do the next one next year, I would even suggest raising the uh, make create like sponsorship packages.
Yeah, I think we should do that for next year.
Like a.
I think this year kind of gives us a baseline of what.
But you could have like a title sponsorship and that could be, you know, sweets or cafe, you know, uh, presents the sweets or switch show in partnership with Yeti's Threads or you know, something like that, get their name on the flyer and then you could create like.
Or they get their name on the, yeah, they get their name on the, well, cause that's how we're doing camp and drag. Like, I'm just, I'm one of the sponsors and but to get your name on the flyer, you're like in a certain tier.
Yep, yep, so there's like title, you know, platinum, gold, silver, bronze, and then you have like in kind sponsorship, which like, like Autozone donates a wash bucket to give away or something like that.
For fifty fifty.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, that's something else we gotta do, bro. Even think about fifty fifty and raffles and shit.
Yeah.
We may not.
Well, we could do fifty fifty's easy, we can just walk around with a bucket and collect money and then announce it at the end and whoever wins the fifty fifty, we just give them half the cash, you know, and then the other half would come back and stay in the pot for the event for next year. You know, or or use that, the remaining amount from the fifty fifty and add it to the donation that we give to the volunteer fire department, you know, whichever we would prefer.
Did we call, I would call it the sweets or switch show, what, that what we went with, you know?
Yeah, but like, yeah, next year we'll create like levels of sponsorship, so you know, you could do like a five hundred dollar sponsorship, a four hundred, two fifty, hundred and.
And then next year we can work on like maybe getting booze out there and you know, like, have Matt bring a booth or.
Yeah.
Whoever.
Yeah, you can definitely expand.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, the first one, it's still about, you know, lots more smaller than it is, now it's huge, so.
Yeah.
First one was chaos.
I just wanna see, I mean. I mean, I kinda have a feeling it's gonna be decent for the first year.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But I mean, obviously gonna have room to improve.
Might have to re spell that very well. Okay.
Okay, so, yeah, that's what we'll do.
So, yeah, I would, I would just let people know that, you know, hey, I know originally I told you fifty dollar sponsorship. You know, if you, if you'd like to do a hundred dollar sponsorship, you know, we'll mention your name on as one of the event partner event sponsors. You know, and just kind of sweeten the deal for them a little bit, like, you know, we create special posts on the page just for, just for them, like, hey, if you need, you know, such and such done, you know, check out these guys, if they're an event sponsor, dah dah dah, you know. And share their information, but yeah, if they're, if they're like dead set on fifty and they're like, no, I'm not gonna do it.
I think Dugan probably will be.
You know.
Yes.
Then just, yeah, then just do the fifty, but if you can, try to, try to let people know that you know, the sponsorship, and if they ask, just say, you know, we had, we, we had to get event insurance also, so this money's gonna help pay for that.
Tell them it's our first time.
It's our first time, do you remember how much the cost is on the dash black?
Did I send you the?
Yeah, I don't know, I got, remember.
It was on, yeah, it's on, I know, it's on that email.
Uh, let's see, so we've got.
It was very much, but.
Twenty eight by ten piano carbon fiber finish plaque, is that it? Twenty of them?
No, let's see, like fifty, I think.
Oh, yeah, okay, dash, oh, it says dash blacks. Dash blacks fifty, unit price three dollars and fifty cents each for a total of one seventy five. You want to see that?
That's okay.
Two boys.
I'm just gonna throw it out there, if somebody wants to sponsor that, it's two fifty, and we'll find a way to put their name on the dash bar.
No, it's just a little.
I mean, even if it was a logo or a I don't know, something, you know, figure something out, make that a.
Like if someone wants us just to sponsor just all the dash plates.
Right. Does that make sense, Marcus?
Oh, yeah.
Instead of finding twenty individuals, you just have one person and it's two hundred and fifty dollars and they sponsor all twenty or all fifty dash blacks.
Gotcha.
That way it's one seventy.
Their name would be on all the bash plaques.
Right, so it would be trophy plus marketing plus dash black, so there's three levels. You got your trophy sponsorship at fifty, trophy.
Are you doing that right now?
Yeah.
Sweet.
So I'll have it printed out so that we can.
You spelled that wrong.
You know what? I can't see the dang thing.
This ah.
This ah.
There's like it's uh, it's one or things.
Yeah. I guess if somebody donates more, they donate to.
Yep.
What happens if we get a shitload of people? Well, I guess we're just getting bigger bash plaques.
Yeah, we make more plaques. We find something else for, you obviously give people an opportunity to spend their money, like whatever it is, if somebody came to you and said, I wanna give a thousand dollars, what do you do for me? I don't know, I'll figure something out.
Well, for business owners, it's a tax write-off, so.
Right, you know.
I mean, next, like, I, I was talking to the guys in the Andy One Foundation about this and uh, next year we would probably be willing to uh, chip in on this as well. If we can maybe use the proceeds to help a couple local veterans within the sweets or communities, we also.
Well, that works good too.
That way we can tie our name to it to.
Yeah.
And we can donate to it, cause that's our, our foundation only gives to veterans.
Yeah, no, I'm done with that.
That was just something like.
Anything that's a good cause, you know, I mean.
If there's a vet that needs a ramp bill to to his house or.
Yeah.
You know, whatever.
I just, you know, kind of thought of the fire department because my little brother, but.
Yeah, who's your little brother?
David McQueen, well, he works in Maryland.
Correct.
Yeah. Yeah, he's a fireman and.
But once it gets big enough, maybe we can split it. You, you know, eighty percent to the fire, fire department and I don't know, there's a lot of veterans that live here in Switzerland. But I'll just throw in that out there, but yeah.
I'm down.
Uh, yeah, we need to start collecting money though, for sure.
Yeah, because it's gonna be like as long as we have it by July, I think, oh, cause he said they just needed about a month to make them.
Yeah, I would, I would, do they require a down payment or payment in full to start?
Well, I'll just start collecting the money and I'll bring it, make sure you guys let her know, yeah, once you get that typed up, that gives me something to, are you, can you make that, print it so I can take it? And I can take it, you know, that way they have something to show and then, um yeah, like you said, I'll just have car show memo or car, car show in the memo and then, um uh, I'll just bring the money in here, give it to her. We can, she can start writing down who's paid and who's not, and I'll make sure a list too on mine. And then, um, you guys will have that. And then whenever we get it, like two weeks from now, so two weeks from now, I'll make it my goal to have all the money collected and then you guys can just cut a check to progress. How's that?
That work, and that's for.
Trophies.
Trophies, yes.
Cause we gotta get that shit ordered.
Yeah, get us uh, text your artist guy and see if he can give us an invoice, as soon as he can give us an invoice, we can write a check.
Yeah.
The old school way, through snail mail.
Okay.
And get him paid, or you can, we can even give the check to you and you can take it to him, you need a way.
This is Maryland.
Jeez, okay.
Well, he can type something up on Microsoft Word.
Have them type. I mean, it sounds like a good ride, right?
Yeah, no, it's a good, it's a real good ride, I love it over there.
Have them type something up on Microsoft Word and just email it to you and then you can email to John or me and I'll print it and I'll drop it off.
Okay.
Or whatever, but yeah, it, it doesn't have to be like, like, just gotta have a piece of paper, right, showing.
What you pay.
We paid for.
Okay.
Maryland, yeah.
That's a, but is that what we're gonna charge for vendors to come in, is fifty dollars?
I, I think so, I mean, if it's, if it's a first year, it may not be as.
Yeah.
Fifty, that's it?
For food vendors?
It's cheap.
Gas City first Fridays is seventy five.
Oh, so. They gotta kind of.
What will be, they were setting up down there in a church parking lot, we're gonna do that this year? The second Fridays or whatever? I, that was, it's not. Say leave it at fifty for first year, cause we're gonna have, I mean, while we were talking about getting you were gonna bring your hot dog cart, right? And then. You were gonna bring your hot dog cart, right, and then who else, uh? Holy Donuts, and then what else were we talking about bringing? Oh, uh, was it Los Amore or no, Don Burrows?
Oh, yeah.
We need to get ahold of them. And ask them if they're available that weekend, and if they are, if they would be interested in setting up for an event.
Yeah, cause I subway, donuts. And hot dogs.
Yeah.
And ice cream and cafe.
Yeah. I kinda think we don't need Don Burrows, to be honest, but. Because the more food vendors you have, the less everyone makes.
Yeah.
So you got hot dogs, are you doing Subway Kyle? Or Holy Donuts?
Well, Subway, we hope.
I don't blame you. So we'll have hot dog, holy donuts and the sweets or cafe. Subway, he says he's not bringing Subway down here. He's not gonna move it down here for the day. So maybe we could do Don Burrows. That way you'll have cafe, Don Burrows, hot dogs and holy donuts, that's four, that's probably. So when you get ahold of Don Burrows.
Much like five thousand people comes, you know.
You don't be amazing.
What day is this?
Uh, was it August twenty third?
Yeah.
August twenty thirty. Yep, I say, yeah, start collecting money. John, do we know what the rider's gonna be get?
No, I'll reach out tomorrow.
Marcus, hit me up if you need anything else, like, I'm off tomorrow, so I might try to get in touch with Don Burrows.
Here's what I'm thinking, I gotta hold the insurance, letting them bring the rider, maybe have some questions.
Yeah. Scold.
From my house, I just go. Twenty trophy sponsors.
Yeah.
The underwriting will have questions.
Yeah.
Not pretty easy to hold a.
So is there anything that we're needing to do for the circus Sunday? Or they need us to set up anything or have anything ready for them? Run out of mode, right?
Yeah, circus is Sunday, this Sunday?
Yeah, it's Sunday on Father's Day.
Yeah. Did that today, so they've been cleaning it up over there, make it. Make it look nice, uh. Brooks was not able to get anything scheduled. Get a tape.
Okay, if anything else pops up, let me know. Get it squared away.
Having busy, so I kinda spaced it last meeting.
So moving on to department reports, um, you have anything specific from Brad?
Um. Not necessarily, uh, we have gotten use out of our flock cameras already. So. They're working a. Pretty big prob case. One of our residents was probably out of two hundred eighty grand. So. He's working on that. Quite helpful. Kind of a part of the stuff, so. Wow. Other than that. Not anymore.
Somebody else has it, man.
Yeah. It's intense. Yeah, it is. Notice they put block camera on the wrong side.
Which one?
It's supposed to go on the other side of the intersection.
No, but they're supposed to be on this side.
One was.
On the north side of the intersection, one.
No, last meeting we talked about. Movement to the other side of the road so that we could capture. Uh, the intersection, people heading. Out for sleazy and and.
They're supposed to go on the southeast side. That was by their father on bolt.
Yeah. But it's already there, so.
Looking for the email, yeah. So the one at two hundred should be on the northwest corner. Of that intersection. On utility pole.
I don't know, that wasn't school.
So that is the north camera. And then the south camera. We had talked about. Trying to have them move it to the.
Yeah.
South side. South side.
Yeah.
But it was a. We believe that it was a. Distance. Issue, and in order to get. Um. Play values. For play images. But that's why they. Said they had to put it over that way. But by the time we had discussed it, it was already in.
Yeah.
Installation phase. And with the turnover they had in staff, he didn't have any notes as to why, but that was the assumption that was made.
Because yes.
Throw no changes at them now, just get it in the ground.
I mean, we'd probably go make it out, move it over.
It's all forward.
It'd be our luck we'd hit fiber though, signal back in.
For gas line.
Rather hit a gas line with fiber. It's, I think it's more expensive.
So I believe. We have settings corrected now for. Our part time guy so that they can use them as well. So Colton's on the night, so I asked him to log in and make sure that he was able to. To grab that. Info. Still would like to find somebody for the. The east side of town. To, you know, here between here and GM. However. So that we've got all four sides covered.
Were we gonna talk to first option?
Yes.
Did they ever respond?
I have a name, but I don't have contact specific to them. Uh.
I'll go talk to Doug. Stuff in there, yeah. Good one, you know, his fingers here.
Yeah. I don't know, my ones aren't on that.
All right.
I said I've got a microphone though.
Yeah, I know. Swing, I'll try to swing by and talk to Doug or something tomorrow, I'm off tomorrow, so. Just see what he says.
Three thousand a year.
Yeah, it's three thousand a year. That's really not bad.
That's what we would, that's what.
Do we pay them that or just?
That's what. That's what the cost to block is for the annual use of the camera. Per camp. We pay, we pay six a year for our two. County pays for the one by the high school. And then this will be sponsored by.
First off, first off, so they would have to pay three thousand a year.
Um. On the Tahoe, we did issue the demand letter since they have failed to. Complete the vehicle.
I mean, what's what they have it?
Uh, we deliver, he picked it up January nineteenth.
January, February.
And I have, I would say weekly contact with them. And like I, we discussed. In the email. That. If there's always something.
Yeah.
And. Like it was last week, he said he had three days off, he's gonna wrap it up. Then nothing. And I have to take a day off to keep my sanity. Bro, I'm sorry, Mike, but. You've agreed to do something, you've been paid.
Yeah, well, it what got me, I was sympathetic to his response, but then. You know, going back and reading. On May fifth, he said one hundred percent definitive completion by this Friday. And it's a month later, and we haven't really added anything.
Now, what we had initially was the the the.
Radio, right?
Well, radio was included in the beginning, what we were adding was radar. And printer setup.
Yeah.
Because they were not included from the get go.
True.
I would. I mean, I don't build police cars for a living, but. I would think I would put in a radar and a printer. I mean.
Well, he's had an extra month.
Yeah.
So that should have been enough time to do those two things.
Then I got a text, the last thing is to install the drawer and wash it. But then he had order more parts all of a sudden. So I I don't know.
So is it done or are we gonna get it back and it's gonna have?
We may very well get it back and it's not completed, and then we have to sue. In order to recover the funds that we paid him, cause he didn't finish it.
Really?
Right.
What'd you say?
He said, and then we sold them for the truck.
You have to send it out to someone else to to finish.
I always got some lights. So as long as we stick our head out the window, go.
I can hypnotize to that.
I have this point. Yeah, he's had it for six months, almost six months, come on.
He had that same problem with the EMA card that we have every day.
Crazy.
Hmm.
Yeah, you were, you were feeling all sympathetic for it, like, so was I for a while, yeah, I just got it.
Well, I saw I read your response when I was like. You know, all right, you know, but. We might consider, let's think about just letting them, and then I read, what was his last communication, you sent me that, I was like, never mind. Never mind, that was a month ago.
So that's that, Tuesday, we don't hear from him. Name. Fowler, whoever's on, well. Take a ride and.
I respect that, I respect what he said about, you know, he's not just. You know, have people, yeah, fly by night, have people that don't really care, just bolt and putting bolts and, you know. I respect that, that his hands are in every single thing, but.
But still, we. Someone else that does that over and over again, would add it back three months ago.
Yeah.
And he's about as slow as. But that was the. Why we went the direction we went was for.
Because he was overbooked over there, but we just still had it.
Yeah, but I don't know if Lehman's doing other jobs throughout time and just put us on the back burner.
Yeah, we already got our money, so.
Right.
Man, that's a lot of it, it's not, uh. Not the front of your brainwave or even faith, right? You know. I will be.
That's why it's. That's why, like, when I do a poster, I only take half up for. It's like, if you're that guy, you're like, wow. Start kinda dragging your feet.
Yeah. So. Anyway, let's go right there.
We get it back and it's done.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Like completed a hundred percent and it's like. What the hell?
Yeah. Yeah, but. Uh, give you each a. Uh. Listing for new laptop, we need new laptops and both of the current vehicles, plus eventually we'll need anyone of the. Twenty four. But. Uh, we could either order one, make sure we like the way it works, but we're just going to get a boat now. Computers are computers for the most part. For what we're trying to do, so.
When you two own, you said?
Yeah.
Well, no boats are pretty good, bro.
Yeah, this is definitely middle of the middle of the road. Tough, cheap, it's not the most expensive. The technology company that came through, neat. They gave us, uh, six hundred dollar estimates on computers. And. He's been very consistent since then. John and I did not respond.
For a long time, I had two things.
We got a couple of people married.
Yeah.
Right ahead.
County will set them up for us, uh. Kevin Hicks. Will go through and. Get the things on we need, so we should be good from that, that's the point. But this is, these are just on Amazon, so we'd have them, I think by Monday. And I would give the county, get them.
What is this? Extra memory? Yeah, so next turn, I'll assist you.
Yeah, it is. Come hard to read, but.
Well, it's up.
Which, why do you need extra five twelve, you got two terabytes?
Cause it's right when you can take with you a little more.
Yeah, two terabytes, I mean, that's a lot of.
Yeah. Yeah, but this is something like it. New takes a home, gonna take the laptop and just. External hardware, essentially, yeah. That seems good to me. Does it happen, this might be a silly question, but I just have to ask because. Does it have touchscreen?
No, this one does not, there are some. Options for that. But that, this one in particular is not. But I mean, can you imagine, I'm gonna pick on Cory, can you imagine Cory finishing up his sweet idea teriyaki and then. Trying to put something on the screen and, you know.
I I found, I found touchscreen in my work laptop to be extremely beneficial, that's the only reason I asked. And I think in my head, like, you know, these guys. You know, rather than having to. You know, there might be situations that arise where. Especially if you're. They might just be able to reach up and touch it.
You're not on the desk and your only mouse is. We miss.
Yeah.
I'm kinda.
So much easier to do.
It is.
Yeah.
I agree.
I got a Dell that's touchscreen and, um. I just kinda discovered it was touchscreen the other day. Yeah. Well, he told me it was touchscreen, but I kinda didn't, kinda forgot about it, yeah.
Those people will think the laptop's being touchscreens.
Well, and it's real biased, cause you can just. You know, obviously when you type, you gotta use a keyboard, but. I think being a police officer, it might be beneficial.
Just throwing it out there, I don't know, I mean, if the touchscreen option that is. Not too much more, I would say.
Tough Cory to keep his hands clean.
Yeah.
My screen could work, it's like a chicken teriyaki.
Right.
Take that. I can feel my. That's a little film. Yeah, once it gets dirty, you just roll, roll it.
Like the race car drivers.
Yeah, ripping off and going, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Tear the film off. Um, not, uh, I mean, there are some. Some HPs for. The touchscreen seem to be bigger. Yeah, that's a good thing, too. It says, I got HP at home, my work computer, it's an HP, same size, fifteen point six inch, I think. However, those, you can fold the monitor all the way around and it turns into a tablet. But I stopped doing that, cause I've broken two of them. Thirty two gig, one and a half terabyte storage. It it is. It it is.
Five sixty, so it's a little cheaper. HP versus Lenovo, I'm not techy enough to know. The difference, this is just one of those.
Same size, recommended. Would you say it was the capacity again, one and a half terabyte?
Yeah, it's a little less stored, it'd be thirty six gigs.
She's saying.
Yep.
It's cheaper too, right? Cheaper? I don't know. I think Lenovo is kind of. They're like one of the better brands of laptops nowadays. At least that's what the guy at Best Buy told me, I've just been trying to sell me. I didn't buy one anyways. Well, I do. It don't matter to me, I would say go with the touchscreen one, but. A little cheaper too, but I think. It don't make no difference to me. Don't get with the Lenovo too.
It's the most confusing motion I've ever heard.
Where are your folks?
I. Either way, they get new computers, I think, so they have.
Make a motion to buy the HPs then.
Motion from Tyler, second from Matt. Purchase two. HP touchscreen laptops. At uh. Five fifty nine. But before I. Hope for a vote on that, so it's not available.
That that sounds good to me, that gives you a little flexibility too.
Yeah, better go fifteen.
Fifteen.
Oh, yeah, that makes sense.
Yeah, so, yeah, covering the unexpected expenses, shipping, whatever, warranties. So, yeah. Just two thousand. Are we gonna get any warranties?
Okay, so are you mending to just put a? Fifteen hundred dollar price?
Yeah.
So, motion from Tyler, second from Matt. To approve the purchase of two new laptops of fifteen hundred dollars for S U T P D. All in favor?
All right.
He opposed. Motion carries. We still need to work through S O P updates. I forgot to put on here, but traffic ordinance needs work. We had the issue with the semi on Greenberry the other day. And. It is. Unclear. Without uh. Legal review, whether or not we could have even. Cited them. Because the parking says, it lists out where you can. Park and get stuff on. Main street, some different areas, but it doesn't specifically say it cannot be. On general side streets, which is. Problematic. So I'm gonna take a walk to the chamber report.
So you have to update the. Parking ordinances. I park in the side of my yard all. One of my steps on those.
We're not allowed to park in our yard?
No. You can't, you're not allowed to park in your driveway.
What's going on?
You can only drive in your driveway. You can park in your driveway. Nothing, I'm just messing with you.
They tried to run me open the golf cart. It's only fair.
So. No driving in driveways. Parking.
Right, I can't take the confusion, okay? Did I forward that on the current traffic ordinance that arrived?
Yes.
So. Knock her back from Michael. But in order to. Clear that up. I think we need to make some. Some changes there. We'd also talk at one point about making a no semis on side streets rule. We would have to. Probably declare a business route, you like Pennsylvania and unfortunately Greenberry. Because. The trucking company. By the post office is on Greenberry. But if we specify that there can be no parking on Greenberry, then that would. That would fix that issue, but I know that people mentioned that before about the semis parking.
He was just parked there?
Yes.
Like not running, like?
Not running. I mean, you're driving a semi, you go inside to grab lunch real quick, okay, you leave it running fifteen minutes, whatever.
Yeah.
But he he was taking the sweet time clearly, and he was loaded too. So that weight is not intended, our roads aren't built to sustain. A full truck.
Let me tell you, now Marion's. Ordinance, there is no part of the semi trucks anyway. Unless it is. Like at the business, you're dropping off.
Yeah.
We have semi truck drivers all the time pulling in the driveway and parking. Tech.
Yeah.
If they use that old lot where.
That one, and then they use the old data lots. My son used to use. The original Denham's building, before Dell General really took over it. But yeah. Don't, but if you want happy truck drivers, then I go tell them they gotta move career off road.
We need to get that updated then.
Yeah.
So who goes about doing that? Michael?
Michael in chat. G P T.
Is it, like he said, it's it's. Not necessarily necessarily being. Complicated about it, but the weight of them. Will crush your range. Especially, you know, they're. Home for three days, they're they're parked there or whatever.
Yeah, it's just, it's very. Legalese, if you will, that talks about specific streets and directions on the street, which side of the street. No parking within, should protrude, within twenty two feet on either side of an intersection. Need to save a park. Unless designated by a sign, which there are areas that say. Parking here. Uh, cause there is parking on. That side of Main Street, all all the way down. Both sides, actually, so where it's obviously designated parking.
Yeah.
That would also stop the issue on Greenberg where people park along. Where the guy's got his. Been a complaint for a long time. I'm guilty of that, that's where we always park for the park for the post office. So we'll work on that, get that.
Same here, I still do it. But not from like, I just park right there, run in, grab it, come back.
So we'll continue on that, get that uh updated. Nothing from. Patrick for that, he's on vacation. I think from parks. But I'm aware of. I've not heard anything else from R Q A W, but they got everything submitted they needed to for the Oprah grant. Jason.
Did we ever determine if uh Patrick could? Isn't. If he could run parks in the account employee? We had a discussion about that.
Yeah, we we have not had a. A formal discussion on that.
Isn't it cool?
That he didn't think it would be an issue? Is that something Patrick is? Interested in?
Not necessarily.
Have someone in that role. We do need to, I forgot about this. Need to uh. Michael's here next, back on the H R. Policy. Um, Jason. Was told by E B mid to late June. Were starting the north project. And again, it's a thousand dollars a day until they make substantial. Efforts on starting the project. Wait, so you, like, they at least have a leg to stand on if they were to come into town, put signs up and done something. That would have taken them from a thousand a day to five hundred. To a thousand dollars a day.
Yeah, and that's. Not taking off the top of the bill, right, that's actually they have to pay.
Correct.
When were, when were they supposed to, what was the original date, May twenty fifth?
Oh, no, it was before that.
Do um, is that twenty twenty four dash two?
Yes.
Oh, the sidewalks were the ones that were supposed to be completed by May twenty fifth.
Yeah, so so contract was signed on eight eight of twenty four, they have two hundred and seventy days to complete, which would then make that.
Oh, wow.
That's the date I remember.
So that's why I had a brush lane fault, was. Warranted to that, but. It wasn't right, so.
So roughly thirty six, thirty seven days now, at a thousand dollars a day. Travis is like, let's get them, let's go, send them a nasty letter, I'm gonna rack up the bill, like. I mean, that total project was. Seven hundred, eight hundred thousand? So.
Yeah.
Go three years if they really want to, and I'll take, I'll take every bit of.
Then you're paying the job off.
Yeah, I'll I'll take.
The liquidation.
We only have twenty five percent of that. It's seven five twenty with the state, and according to everybody so far, the penalties come back to us directly. So if they want to take three years, you can send every complaint to me. And. We we pay the whole town and come out five hundred thousand dollars ahead?
Yeah.
Yeah, right?
Uh, I I wanna ask, cause I wasn't sure how that part works, so if, once they. You know, pay that fine or whatever, what happens with that? Does that go, where does that money go?
Probably to back, well, probably go to. Local roads and streets and.
Probably that or M P H.
So it won't just be allocated willy nilly, it'll go back to the same general. Type of project. No, no.
That's not at all.
It would go towards our match on there. Or to our. Crossing project.
I do want a new Harley. Not, no, it's still red. I was just wondering, like, would we, like, I guess. I was wondering, would we be able to use that money to pay for the seventy five twenty five split? Or will that had already been paid?
I would not co-mingle those back together, I would leave that separate, I would probably, I mean, if we end up with forty five to sixty thousand dollars. I'll put it towards the crossing project, is my intention.
Gotcha.
Because that is. I think it costs more than. Than we anticipated.
Yeah. Compliments of V and V.
Yeah.
Put a little plaque there. Special thanks to you. Okay. Yeah, I was looking for paving companies for my work the other day. I was like, I know I'm not using. Okay, yeah, that was, that was where my curiosity lied. Just wondering where that money, if we would be able to use that, but yeah. Yeah. All right. Dang, man, they're wrecking the bill.
Jack, you have anything related to anything? John has good news from our credit card application.
I see that.
Should be here next week, the counter's actually set up, I can. Actually buy something.
I had not looked into it yet. Sarah had mentioned. The text feature. When we have the issue with trash pickup. Sarah thought it would have been nice to have a way to be able to text out to the town and say. This is the situation. Or things like, send that text for the.
Circus.
Circus, or, you know, whatever the case will be, so we're gonna try to explore some options on that. Payroll, anything new on that front?
Not yet.
Okay.
I need to work with. I don't know if that's ready to be deployed yet, but. Maybe he'll have some kind of freedom to pay the bill too. Maybe allow students to.
Cause was was Gassy um. Acquired by someone else, or?
No.
They just had a software update that.
Now. I'm a little bit. Be cautious. I think they maybe have sixty to seventy clients. And the only reason I think think that is because. They do their. It's about how many. Invoice numbers. So. I know it's just a couple of guys.
Yeah.
And I've been in that situation when I first came here, and that's kind of what happened.
Right.
Those guys just. Disappeared.
Yeah.
So it. Doesn't. Doesn't seem like we have. Good options for accounting, so. We were gonna do something that's. Barely adequate that, or pay for the health or something, there's so much.
I know we can't do bookkeeping through any sort of like Intuit or QuickBooks. But is there a rule that we can't use them as a payroll processor?
I don't know about that.
Because if we kept our books separate, but we're just doing payroll that way.
I mean, I may reach out to them. We'll talk to them. Stay more candid.
I feel like there's gotta, we can't be the only small town that's in Indiana.
A lot of them have just shelled out for Keystone for boys. Which was sixty thousand, I think.
I'm guessing now is probably more so they can save and purchase, but. Golly.
There there's upfront software costs and then annual maintenance fees. And they do not, for some reason, they do not. And they do not, for some reason, they do not spread that out over like five years.
No, as far as I know. Um, they don't have like a, a basic. Premier and like.
See if business opportunity.
Develop, develop some software.
You get all the features or none?
Yeah.
No, we don't need all the.
You'll get all small towns, go pay. Go out my software.
Like that world is changing. The ice cream chips up.
Well, you know. It is an amazing thing. I've started using it recently. Pretty cool.
The, the man that we sent was written by tragic. Michael, you had no, no gloms of that. Granted, it's not, not got a lot of legal theory in it, but.
But if you would have told it to.
Yeah.
For the theory of one of.
Right, added citations, whatever.
So it was a reserve. Turned out.
Yeah.
That was that golf outing that I'm starting the plan of the foundation. I had Grok put it all together. I just put it typed in what I wanted and. Altered it and put together a whole package, sponsorship package and everything. I was like, maybe just save me two weeks work.
I'm going to speak. I know it's coming. But I think, I think it's Apple now has. It has the capability of real time. Translation. When I speak, I'm speaking Spanish and one language.
Yeah, there's some.
Yeah, I've seen it. Yeah, I've said once.
I know, I know Apple's also. Has their new call screening feature. Where they leave a voicemail. And if it's important, you can go and answer it after they've left.
Just, just like when they steal a voicemail on your, your home answering machine.
Yeah.
You just screen it and see who's calling. Have you, have you seen that yet?
Pick it up while they're leaving the voicemail. You're like, oh, I should have got that. It was pretty crazy. I saw in action today on my phone. I was like, oh, wow, glad I didn't answer that. All right.
Anything else, John?
Uh, I have started. Going through the ordinances. And it's gonna, it's a lot more time soon. Not because so much of what they've done. But. Still a part of that, trying to figure out what has superseded. So some things aren't in. That were, that I sent it. It's because they supersede this. So I think.
Which I thought, I mean, this has been a while ago, but I thought they were supposed to go through and say. Well, this is what you got. This is what you should have.
Yeah.
Approve it and here's your new.
I thought so too. And maybe at the end of the day, it will all be, it is that way, but. My good travels, it's just. I'm thinking having insurance that. Bring your compliments.
Right.
So. It's gonna, I started, you know, I've, I've been working on it. Trying to get a. Methodology down. I think I got it, so I don't have to backtrack, but it does get very confusing something. It's been. Give you an example, no ordinance that was passed. In. Twenty twenty three, that amended the ordinance that was originally, that. Originally was done in nineteen ninety two, but it's since been amended like three times. And so all those amendments now are out. So I, I think, so my methodology, instead of starting at the beginning, I'm starting at the end. And working backwards. I think that it'll help it go fast. Like I try and use. Yeah, then I can say, okay, so if I, if I know these six ordinances. Have been superseded by this, then I don't have to work.
Yeah. That makes sense.
It took me, took me a while.
If it was all digital. Is it all digital?
It is.
Yeah.
Chat G P T did before.
That would be an interesting thought is to give it the.
Task.
Yeah, give it the link. It may just be a. Experiment later.
Where is the patient? Where is?
Should be linked on the website. Case in point of what you're talking about, readoption of general ordinance number two thousand four dash four, ordinance amending general ordinance two thousand. Dash two and amending general order is nineteen ninety six, three. It should just be. Whatever two, two thousand dash four, whatever the actual ordinance is. Or whatever those recent ordinances.
Yeah, whatever is previous to it.
But in the code, it also doesn't. You can't look it up by ordinance number twenty twenty dash four.
And they, they did provide a, so they've got everything in, in code.
Yeah.
Uh, there, there is a cross reference of code and ordinance. And so that's what I'm working. Cause when I look at the code, I don't, there's no way for me to look at the code and say, oh, that goes in this order. I had to go back to the ordinance.
Yeah.
So basically what I'm doing, I gotta look at all the, all the cross references, find out what's not there. And should it be there? They. I, I travel this year, I. I will bounce it off of them, but I think that's one of the same things. It's all there.
Sounds like a horror movie.
Yeah.
And I know part of it's not, because I haven't sent him the twenty four.
We probably should have the ordinances removed from the website that are out there because there's probably contradictions. Between the two, so I will send over.
Between the ordinances and the code.
Yeah.
That would be good for us. Work for you. But, yeah, so I think the digital version is then you want to. Be able to search, just no one knows all the code. What you're going to search on is topic or key phrase, new. Bang property. Noisel. Lucency. Chicken.
Did you go through and remove the. Various ordinances that are listed on the website? Period. All ordinance. Related. Information should be posted through the. Miracle League. American Legal Publishing link. To this meeting's town code. Okay, so that'll at least take that off of there. Only, only last thing I have is I have an outstanding expense reimbursement that I need to get done. That is before you, I do not have everything with me, but I just want everybody to see what's out there. My credit card would like to be paid off. And so I've got about half of the invoices here, so I'll get the rest of this to John, but just so you know what is. Out there. Check. Um, let me get you the rest of the invoices first, just so you have them.
Shift to France. That's a trip to France.
I'll make a motion. Their expense reimbursement.
I will second that. Wish there was somebody else here because. I feel weird putting on my own expense report. Then motion.
Let's, let's.
More is right.
Yeah. Withdraw your motion if you will.
We'll withdraw it.
Because these are all approved expenses anyway. I don't know that we would have to have.
Yeah.
Full action. It, it will be on the bills next docket anyway. I just want everybody to see.
Yeah.
What's out there? The only oddities are a couple of car washes and which grab there for that.
Just sustainable.
I was betting for the town. Were you guys here when I was? Yeah, were you guys here when we were doing the, uh, we were trying to buy the land when we were up at eighteen? It was up before your time.
Before us.
So I forget, I think the town, we were going to try to buy this empty farmland. And have it for potential development. And so the town told me I could bid up a hundred fifty thousand. So I'm sitting here one day just waiting every, every time it changes. Online bidding up to a hundred fifty grand to the town, winning or losing, we didn't get properties, but. That was the most I've ever been able to.
You know, we live by it.
Uh, McElaine, Greg McElaine.
I'm just walking by there a couple of days ago and I got to thinking about that. It's out in Baton Rouge.
Yeah. They're gonna keep it in crops. But we were going to try to develop it. Town was, or at least.
Expand our town. Where, where, what is our town limits exactly? Is that it?
Yeah. And it's basically everything that's got streets or houses, none of the crops. It does include Major's Drive. Navy Suite Living. Here, I'll break that, but.
Yeah, I think it. Colonial Chris. But Colonial Chris.
Yeah, that's their apartments. So.
Speaking of town a little bit, I'd like to see some small businesses come down through here if ever possible.
Yeah.
I see Converse is killing. With their little businesses, they're doing, that's great.
We don't have like that downtown.
I know, I wish we did.
Business structure like that.
I wish we did. We just got a liquor store.
I saw it. I like those.
Yeah. All right, when are the, the? I saw. Speaking on the liquor store, they had an area plan commission meeting, I assume.
There was a meeting scheduled, but then it was canceled. I don't know what went through there. The email asks, um, Matt, can you find out if they paid the firefighter?
They have not that I know of.
Okay.
Fine, yeah. It says that road is also like, I just found out the other day when I got new tires. This could just be wear and tear, but my control arm is broken.
Yeah, it's rough. It's very rough. I go over that thing every day.
Yeah, on Broadway. And so I'm just going to replace it, you know, but I was like, I wonder if it was caused from that road cut that they did.
Very well could have been.
It's not that deep.
Yeah. But that's, that's what I was curious about and they haven't had a lot of business.
Been very messy in the back.
Yeah.
Yeah. Oh. Which that brings up another point. Uh. I just mowed today, but I didn't even look down there. Do you have access to? Asset payer? No, what's the? Silverstone?
Silverstone, thank you.
I, I do. Yeah. I do.
I would like to officially name Matt Moore as the code enforcement czar.
Yeah, I do. Need to form it into production. Well, I'll do it here too.
Especially once you have. Official, which I think is almost there, official.
It is.
Release hours.
Yeah, we're waiting on that. Best.
Let you start writing on those. We have one process for this half of the year, so I think we'll get in Monday. Funds.
Yeah, Brad said he had Swayze. Show them how they do that.
Yeah.
I'd like to incorporate this room. Like to sit down and dig into the silver, because I would actually like to try and switch marrying. Are you reserved now? Yeah, here, yeah.
Let's come use everybody.
Yeah, it is.
I know. I didn't know he had a twin until.
My friend's in Texas.
Oh, well, wait a minute.
The town marshal is my older brother. Yeah, but they look very close.
Yeah.
To the same.
Well, what the hell? I'm really confused.
All right, we'll get you, see if you want to.
So yeah, I will, I will. There you go.
Well, we tried to make you the.
Yeah, what was that? I was trying to set that up. But then we find out it was. It was. It's, it's a.
Or this violation bureau.
Yeah, there's, there's a, there's Indiana code.
Yeah.
Code that is. Done away with it.
Are we gonna issue ordinance violations to those addresses that?
No, I've. If they are in violation, we should.
Yeah.
Pursue that.
Yeah, because we found out married already. It only takes one or two people before everybody else picks up on it. Then it's just out of here.
I wish Michael was here. I don't know if we proceeded on the various properties that were. Months and months behind.
Supposed to, on the foreclosure part of it.
Yeah.
Would ask.
We really need a generic. Form letter. From Michael chat to address ordinance violations. So when. Our guy C one.
They see that's, that's what I wanted to give them back because on our system we have. I mean, as soon as we enter the system, we can hit. View. View report or whatever that pops up. It's on the city letter and we have. It comes up with the ordinance number. Says your violation, you know, this many days are corrected or no, we proceed to the next step, which is usually post summons. Uh, and I'm sure so brief that has the exact plan, but he said, since they don't use it for code enforcement issues. But he said all he'll do is contact. Make it to where.
Which I think maybe now they are because put one in for. Sharon Street. And that's right when he added you and. Brad.
So if I could sit down with him or, uh. Someone, I've talked to the people, so, so, but when I was looking into. Get the demo married, so. Once I get that figured out.
Yeah, those are two of the things we need for Sam.
Your, to your audience.
Yeah. And, and I don't even mind if we're super lenient about stuff, but we're at least going to start documenting and pushing.
I'm just getting trust in front of everything.
Yeah. Yeah, so. All right, anything else?
Nothing, no. Um, I will not be at the next meeting, going on vacation that same day. Missed it. Enjoy. Thank you. Riding motorcycles. We're all just getting ready to cancel it because all the wildfires. People going up to Milwaukee and around the upper peninsula and coming back down. Some sends a picture of Mackinac Bridge and you couldn't even see it. Yeah, that, there was so much smoke in the air from Canada. It's cleared up.
But, yeah. The state law changes soon where we have to broadcast meetings. Yeah, there's, yeah, there's some rules around those. So I had somebody here today to help push us to the next step. He's got some equipment upgrades that we'll need to do to mix things and. Get things out there better. We can use most of our existing equipment, mics, camera. Uh, so he's going to get an estimate on that for us. He's going to give us a second, sets up for a second monitor. So probably move that one back here. So that public can see what we're throwing up on the screen. And then that one, too big ones, I can see it. We'll have to close the next time for that. We'll have to move on that pretty quick. Uh, but we are recording currently. They're just not being uploaded online anywhere. So. That's still coming.
Did we, did the town put out an official statement that we're not in charge of the runages? Because what Facebook has been blowing up. I thought we had, I thought we put out that it wasn't, uh.
A town organized?
It wasn't organized by the city or the town, it actually had nothing to do with it.
Yeah, I think, uh, Travis had made a post referencing that. In a separate business thing, I figured out how to make Google Maps. Where you put in bots and it points it all out for you.
Yeah.
So next year, we might just get, uh, Google and chat to. Do it for us. We'll, we'll charge five bucks down the map and.
Yeah.
And.
Get involved?
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, that brings, that brings a lot of people to town, so.
Yeah, it does.
What? Does, does, does Congress do the same thing?
Yes.
And Swayze and. I almost wondered if it'd be beneficial to move it to the same weekend as Swayze. Cause a lot of people would be out, they pass through here to get over to Swayze sometimes. Figure out. You join us, right? Yeah, just join us. Whole west side of the county.
Sounds like it's probably likely, whatever weekend it is. And the roads are all torn up.
Yeah. Some of the.
Well, and so it's a Friday, Saturday, so you have a potential of having E and B working. And, and people trying to get in and out.
Just tomorrow, so I need to go.
Someone also made a comment on our Facebook page about when is town cleanup or something? Is that something we organize?
Did that go out on the bill?
No.
Next weekend.
Next weekend.
So we'll probably make a last note of Facebook page. Do we want to pay someone to stay there overnight? The guard, the dumpsters.
Is it a problem?
Was in the past. Last year we didn't publicize it. Um, everybody figured out they filled them up still, but we used to, it used to be on Facebook and bills and letters and signs. And so Friday night, they would fill it up before Saturday we got here. So we paid one year to have. Deputy set out overnight, keep people away. Make them show an ID when they were dropping off, so we could make more of it.
That they were actual residents.
I, I don't think it, I think it was just whoever, cause I hear it.
Well, in, in the past it was, then two years ago, we made them show ID in order to dump. Last year, nobody knew it was coming ahead of time because we didn't publicize it. We did not pay for overnight watch.
Was there a problem last year?
No, we had a lot of, uh, illegal dumping, things that weren't allowed. So we actually received a bill for like five or six hundred bucks, I think, for tires, chemical paint, things like that, that. Shouldn't have been in there.
I'd say yes, then. We should have some type of. Have one of the marshals or deputies or something sit out there. But willing to. Especially invest maybe a sign that says, you know, no tires. None of the household things.
Man, I think it says on that on the dumpster.
It's usually a dials, yeah. People don't care. Marion's cleanup is the same weekend, so. We have a reserve. I'll be in Marion.
We're talking the overnight.
All the ambulance out there and sits.
That's a good idea, actually.
Yeah, I mean, there's ways to, we could, it would be cheaper to take the bucket truck and. Back truck and just block off the area.
Yeah.
People can still be creative and go through.
I didn't even know we did that. You've been taking all my trash and my work and dumping it. We've got a huge dumpster in the ice, so.
Yeah, so that's next weekend.
There you go. Basketball goal I need to throw in there.
Is it metal?
Our owner has been working out our cemetery. It isn't, it's suitable. We've been out to actually work. Somebody who doesn't, shouldn't have been there, just dumped stuff in the dumpster out there and approached and said, hey. This is just for this place.
If there's nothing further, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Motion wave.
All favor?
All right.